Make sure you call her name. Mary, I'm gonna put you, put you on high in a minute.
I got beaten up a little bit this weekend. I was, I was going down the, like, mountain. So I've got scrapes all over myself.
Why don't we have an extra chair?
Dr. Meade.
Huh?
Dr. Meade.
Oh. I was gonna say, what's going on?
I'll go, Grandma.
Doctor Meade, could you take a seat, please?
There's this meeting in my.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit this gavel, people. And she hits a gavel. You know what happens. That's why she put it to my left, so I can't hear this so hard.
Alright, I'm ready.
Alright, is everybody here? Alright, then. I'd like to call to order the, what date is it? August 12th, 2019, regular meeting of the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees. Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane is on speakerphone.
And she announced she's here. If you can't hear, let me know. I've got her on speakerphone.
Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Mike Meade.
Here.
Adam Mosip.
Here.
James Thorpe, here. Chair Mayor Petlicoff.
Here.
Next, please.
Approval of minutes for the following Henry Ford College Board of Trustee meetings, the Audit Committee Special Meeting from July, I'm sorry, June 17, 2019, and the regular meeting, June 17, 2019. Make any necessary corrections and approve the minutes as, approve the minutes.
So moved.
Support. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Attach a unanimous roll to that, please. Next, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you, President Cavallona, Chair Petlicoff, and members of the board. My name is Jaido Ruby. I'm an Egyptian student who studied in private language school in Egypt and graduated from law school at Alexander University in Egypt. Afterwards, I worked as a flight attendant at Emirates Airlines in Dubai and was inspired by their HR department to pursue HR as a career. Accordingly, I finished a one-year diploma in human resources from Isleska, a French business school, and got the opportunity to work at a software company that offers business solutions and HR consultancy. At that time, I did university visits, career coaching sessions, and workshops for college students in their final year. I also coached employees with their job-related skills and monitored their progress, which in return motivated me to specialize in that area, help others achieve their goals, and eventually give something back to the community. Accordingly, I felt the need to study business as part of my plan to become a competent career coach and an HR consultant. I choose to study, I chose to study business administration at Henry Ford College and started to take classes in January 2019. During my experience at Henry Ford College, I found the staff and faculty to be very professional, supportive, and friendly. I feel welcomed and comfortable to be myself, no judging, with no judging. I love the culture that welcomes diversity and encourages students to have their own views and opinions without influencing their thinking. I appreciate how organized everything is and the many resources available for students to succeed. That was the support that led to my high GPA last semester. I haven't had the chance to participate in any college activities yet, but hopefully I get to do that this semester. Finally, I'd like to thank you for the continuous support. Now, I'm pleased to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. Congratulations to Keith Binion, Program Director for the Pharmacy Technician and Prepharmacy Program at HFC. Mr. Binion was elected to the position of President-elect for the National Pharmacy Technician Educators Council for the 2019-2020 academic year. He will serve as the President of this committee for the 2020-2021 academic year. The HFC Paramedic Program has partnered with Superior Ambulance Service of Michigan to provide paramedic education to 20 students. This partnership provides students with free tuition via their employer. The Pharmacy Technician Program is now officially recognized by the Pharmacy Technician Certification Board. This means that HFC graduates may be eligible for Certified Compounded Sterile Preparation Technician Certification after only one year of full-time sterile compounding experience, rather than the three years required for candidates who were not trained by a recognized program. The Children and Families Program received notifications of initial accreditation from the National Association for the Education of Young Children. Congratulations to Marilyn White and her team for their hard work. Congratulations to HFC alum John Schreiber, who pitched for The Hoax during 2012-2013 and 2013-2014 seasons. John was called up to the majors for the first time on the 8th of August. John was drafted by the Detroit Tigers in 15th round in 2016 and has been playing with the Toledo Mud Hens since that time. He made his pitching debut on Friday, August 9, at Comerica Park. Thank you for the opportunity to be the month, this month reader. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Ms. Ruby, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yep.
You said you had a high grade point average last semester.
Yes.
What, what was it?
Well, four.
What's that?
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
That's pretty good. That's the only question I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Coming in during the summer months.
Thank you.
Alright, next item, please.
President's items.
Uh, thank you, Trustee Thorpe, Madam Chair. I don't have much for you today, um, and.
That's what we were hoping for.
I aim to please. Uh, your packet has, um, a glossy-bound document from Mirror News, and I leave that to you to read at your leisure. You also have a pair of financial documents. One is rainbow-colored, and you've become quite accustomed to that, is how John Sadkowski and his team evaluates the cash position of the college, always keeping an eye to not face the dire circumstances that the college faced now six years ago. The other document is the budget report, uh, which is the summary page, and that is the summary page for the last year, I'm sorry, the last month of the fiscal year. And the take-home for this document is that, at the end of the year, as we look back at our adjusted budget, and you recall, we adjust our budget mid-year, as we look back at our adjusted budget, we finish the year with expenses or expenditures that were about 0.65 percent higher than we thought. So about a half of a percent higher on expenses than we thought we would be. Uh, but we also had 1.15 percent higher revenue. And, um, that led to, um, an end-of-the-year surplus of around $875,000. Now, um, that's good in, in one respect, um, but, um, it is bad in one respect because, as you all know, that budget included, um, a anticipation of a reduction in enrollment, which is, um, something that will dramatically reduce our revenue. And just, just for, um, context on that, if you look at the, the top line of data here, you have revenue, and then underneath that is tuition and fees. And if you go over to, um, the fourth column, which is fiscal year 2019, percentage of revenue, or if you look lower, it'd be expenses, but here, we're talking about the percentage of our revenue. That shows you that we expected that year, and, and we did, just a little bit more than we expected, but our expectation was that 53 percent of our budget was going to be derived from tuition and fees. So you can see, and, and below that are the other percentages of the revenue streams. So bring that to your attention, just to note that as we look back over the year, you can see how dramatically we are affected by revenue from tuition and fees. And we only have two real ways to affect that revenue. Those are the amount we charge in tuition and fees and the number of enrollees or students we have. Any questions on the financial documents?
Sorry, were you reading that 870,000?
Yes, Trustee Mosip, I should have pointed that out to you more clearly, I apologize. If you go to the very ba, bottom line, that's titled. Yes, yes, so, um, there you're looking at excess revenues or expenditures, and if you were to look at the.
I see.
Oh, you found, you found it?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, you know, Trustee Mosip, I'm glad you asked that question. In the future, um, I may, I may have this document presented up on the screen, so you can see where I'm going. Any other questions, trustees, on the financial documents?
One thing that I noticed, looking at this, alluding to what you were saying, President Cavallona, is tuition and fees in 2018, year-ending 2018, was 553,000 more than what it was last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so revenue, revenue is less in the year that we just finished than the year before that, and that's because of tuition and fees, as you mentioned, Trustee Thorpe. And so you might ask, well, how, how in the heck did we do with, with the surplus? And the answer to that was, um, one, we were much more strategic in how we spent our money. Dr. Nealan was, with the help of Doc, uh, Mr. Sadkowski, very strategic in how they spent money to deliver, uh, the instruction. And you can see in expenditures, the vast leader in expenditures is instruction. So, um, and I, what I do hope to do is remind you all what Dr. Nealan covered in our retreat in December, I believe it was, about how sophisticated we, we try to become in how we deliver the education by making sure that we have the most butts in seats, and I excuse the pun, but the most, number of students in the chairs that we deliver a section to. And then the other thing that this college took very seriously over the last 12 months were, were positions that were budgeted when I arrived on the campus, that we did not fill. So the staff that you interact with at this college are doing as much work as we budgeted with less humans, um, less colleagues. And, um, that, that is what made the number of the surplus that Trustee Mosip asked. So, Trustee Thorpe, I'm sorry, I just completely took over your question, but.
It's alright.
I'm done now.
Just one thing I want to add, looking again at the percentages, um, so much for that three-legged stool that was originally meant to, uh.
It'd be pretty lopsided, wouldn't it?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Well, one thing we all can recognize, because when you look at from year-to-date for 2019 versus 2018, and when you look at things like purchase services and other things, you can see where a lot of the financing differences are. And quite frankly, we know that it just costs more right now to do business than it did even a year ago. And I think that is, we're going to continue to see that inflation rise without the same, and I, we feel it on our own personal lives as we go to the stores and whatnot, that our, our income doesn't rise the way, um, the, the price of goods are. So I have a feeling that, um, we're going to be confronted with this for a while, so we're gonna have to find another way for revenue. Yes, Mary, did you have something?
Yes, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
I don't know if President Cavallona is going to give us an update at some point where we stand or where we look to stand on that strong leg of the three-legged stool, enrollment and tuition.
Uh, yes, um, Trustee Lane and Chair Petlicoff, I can give the.
Do you want to do that now?
The board an update now.
Okay.
So, I, I hope you're not surprised to learn that the entire cabinet and several leaders of the college, including me, get a, a report from the enrollment team every single business day morning. Um, and for us, that includes Saturday. And that gives us the enrollment that we have, uh, going into the fall as compared to that exact day, unless it's off by a non-business day, but by an exact day to the year before. And it breaks it down into categories of tuition, I'm sorry, enrollment, and, um, metrics of enrollment. For example, credit hours, head count. And, um, my report to you, Trustee Lane, has some good and some bad. I'll take them in sequence, uh, how they came. We were making really great progress, um, in, in managing the enrollment issue, um, up until, uh, up, including about four weeks ago. And recall that, um, our budget that we passed, uh, you all passed, I believe, two months ago, um, budgeted to be down 2 percent, I'm, uh, I'm sorry, 3 percent.
3 percent.
And we, we got it to 1.9 percent down. So, uh, 33 percent better than we budgeted, and that was about four weeks ago. Uh, hovered about there, and then we went through our first deregistration process. Now, you all recall that the deregistration process is something that's gone on in this college, and it's very standard for community colleges across our state. And that is simply, um, that if a student is enrolled in a class as, as we approach the coming term, and they have not paid for that class by a certain amount of time, they will be removed from that class. And I'm, I'm glad to note that Trustee Mosip had some useful questions for me very recently about the process, the history of the process being the deregistration process. And my plan is to, to give a, an outlined history and, um, current status of the procedures that we have for the deregistration process. Plan to report that out to the board soon, but you may not be surprised that when you go through your first deregistration, and we have multiple in each fall term, you lose a lot of students. And we climbed up the mountain almost all the way to 1.9 percent less than last year, and after the first deregistration, I believe it was down 15 percent. Now, um, uh, some of that you can attribute to students who really weren't serious. So it's better to know that they were not serious at the time. But from there, we've continued to work and, and tried to, as Michael Nealan says, rebook the passengers, um, in, in sections that, that were, students were waiting to get into those sections, but students were holding spots that eventually got deregistered. And we've made significant progress, chopping it down to down 11 percent, then down 10 percent, down 8 percent. And I believe this morning's report was, uh, 5.2 percent down. And I, I anticipate that we'll make progress until we have, um, what I believe, Mr. Color's, three more deregistrations. And at each one of those deregistrations, we'll be refining the amount of students based on who is serious enough to pay the bill. And I'm still optimistic, Trustee Lane, um, but, uh, the, the current status is, I believe it was 5.19 percent down from last year this morning. So, I've covered the good and the bad news in that report.
The one point I would just make is, as painful as deregistration is, it's really important, because that's one of the reasons that we got into a financial bind, we did not deregister students, and then ended up midway through the semester with, uh, sections that had, that were under, under students. So, it continues to need to be done. Thank you, President Cavallona.
Well, Trustee Lane, I regret that you're not physically here, because as you were saying that, I counted six heads nodding.
Shaking heads.
Nodding, um, in the audience from staff, labor, and faculty. And, uh, like I said, team, I, I, we're gonna keep fighting to try and get to what we budgeted, which was down 3 percent.
Trustee Mosip.
Um, I, I spoke to President Cavallona earlier today about this process, and I'm, uh, I'll tell you, I'm a little bit concerned that we're actually deregistering some students, some good students who are either waiting for their financial aid to be processed or are kind of in limbo of trying to register or to figure out how they're gonna pay for those classes. Now, I do understand that this process was put in place to make sure that the students who are not serious are dropped from our college prior to the section starting, but it's, it's so early that we're doing it three weeks prior to the classes or two weeks, and some students, especially the new students, might not know the policy. So, they may log in even to their student account, and they do see the overdue in red, but it does not tell them, hey, you might be deregistered if you're not enrolled in a payment plan. And I hope these will be addressed, not just by email, but also on the system itself, where it can show them a red alert to tell them that you're, if you're not enrolled by this day, you will be deregistered. So, it gives us the due diligence that we already told them in many multiple ways, via email and via, especially the, the, the new system that we have for registration, which was, used to be Web Advisor, that if you're not enrolled, or if you don't have your financial aid set by that day, then you will be deregistered. So, I, I hope that will be taken into consideration. Thank you.
May I respond?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, Trustee Mosip, I appreciate you bringing those concerns to my attention this morning, and I, I also, um, I appreciate you bringing them up today in the meeting. I, um, I, I'm glad you're recognizing some of the places where we need to evaluate our policies, and if there are opportunities for us to improve, I think, um, that's one of the great opportunities we have as partners in the Oversight Board that you, uh, see, serve in that capacity, and then, of course, us in the, um, the delivery of the process. Uh, what I'd like to do is, is to give a report to all the board.
Sure.
On, um, some of the issues that you've raised, and I do really appreciate you bringing this to the attention of my staff. And then, uh, I would be happy, um, and I would encourage any board member to help me evaluate where we can refine our process, um, if necessary, to better serve, um, any student, because, uh, Trustee Mosip, um, if there are students out there that our policies are adversely affecting, who really do want and deserve an access point to this education, um, I, I, I'm committed to working with you to make sure that they get, um, access, including, um, if you do have individual students that you can send my direction, please do that. I, I, the last thing I want is to have someone who, who is ready and willing, um, but somehow gets denied access.
Sure. Can I, can I suggest, when you give that report, though, that you give a brief history for those board members who are new to this and didn't, um, experience what we experienced in the past with our financial struggles, when we had students, um, in a compromised position, um, financially, and, and we allowed it to linger to the point where, um, our doors almost closed. So I would like to make sure that you, everybody is updated before they understand why, what's been put in place as a policy has been put in place, so that it, it's clear. And then, and then we can see where we can move forward to tweak it for those students who are, who are still not, um, serving as well as we could be. Are there any other questions? Trustee Barry.
President Cavallona, I guess my question would be, before we push that button to de-register, do we have any way, like you said earlier, there's three today we're dealing with, do we try to reach out to the students? Be a phone call, or what have you?
Yeah, there, there are multiple, um, media avenues in an attempt to reach out to the student. And I'm happy to outline all those to you, but they include postcard, email, robocall. And again, uh, I, I do feel confident that we can all learn more about our process when I get this report to you all, but I also feel confident that if we've got students that a policy developed five years ago are negatively impacting, we should start talking about ways to improve, uh, that interaction. And I, I, I serve as, as a partner to you all to always evaluate whether we can improve.
I, I 100% agree with you there. There are some students savvy enough to reach out to administration or to them with the board members and kind of guide them, guide them through it, but there are some that just have no clue when you get to deregistration, and they think they're done, well, I'll just register again next semester, and next semester, and everything comes back. So, thank you for thinking that with that. Yeah, back then, I remember, uh, we went through, it was ugly. Okay, we said, okay, we have to put all these filters, blah, 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 maybe we do have to, because of those, so, thank you.
Trustee Barry, if, if you all are our ears and eyes on the community, if you have community members who have reached out to you, please direct them to my office. I, I, I hope that in the year I've served as your partner, that you've seen, I, I'm interested in hearing about what their concerns are.
And we do. I'm referring to those that don't have access to.
Oh, okay.
Jim's phone number, or Ida's email address, or something. Those are the ones that we have to come and act.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
So when I show you all what we're doing, help me find the gaps.
Okay.
So we can improve.
Fair enough, thank you.
Right, does anybody, yes, Dr. Meade?
Do we have comparison data for credit hours?
Uh, on an enrollment?
Where we are right now in enrollment?
Yes.
Compared to last year?
That is the, those are the data that I was, was reporting on.
Oh, it's 5 percent also with credit hours, as well as enrollment?
Uh, that, that is credit hours.
Oh, you're talking about credit hours, not students?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, there, there are a couple of bright spots, and I'm hesitant to even say this, because I, when you're budgeting, you should be pessimistic, which is really not in my constitution. But, um, you, you know, we've, we've trended up in applicants over the last year. We've trended up in, um, um, people who've actually enrolled. But as you know, Dr. Meade, head count is a far different thing than, um, credit hours.
Credit hours.
And credit hours are the, are the tuition driver.
Very good, thanks. Whenever there's bright signs, please share. We love to hear it.
Is there any other questions? Alright, then, next item, or are you, you still have?
No, no, yeah, just a couple, uh, Madam Chair. This board has directed that we, as a college, evaluate how we're, how we're maintaining our, our position in our, um, climate and in our environment. And, uh, we took that so seriously, we issued an RFP for someone to help us recycle, with our recycling needs, especially regarding paper. And I, um, reported out to you all recently that we were surprised to learn that the recycling industry has taken a change for, um, maybe the worst, but certainly a surprise, and that is, um, institutions or companies that offer recycling services for paper and some other, um, types of materials cannot, cannot guarantee that the items we would take to them in our recycle bins would not end up in landfills. So, I, that would be, uh, essentially shooting one's own foot. And I'm hesitant to do that. So, on top of that, which makes it probably even two shots in the same foot, um, if we did engage into that kind of, um, situation, it would cost us more for refuse service than we have now. So, the cabinet and I are still kind of working through the way to deal with the results of the RFP, um, and I'm certainly not ready to make an announcement publicly, I don't think that would be fair to any of the persons and companies who, uh, respond to the RFP. But in the meantime, I did want the staff to be able to report to the board about the things that the, the college does, um, to care about its environment and climate. And I've given you two documents, each of them are one-page, and they are outlining information about what this college is doing on those fronts. Uh, there are very well-intended and, uh, hard-working people who are involved in this. I encourage you to look over the documents I've, I've given you, and feel free to give us any feedback you have on, um, those, those bits of information, or the question we're kind of mulling over regarding the RFP for recycling information. And I think that's all I have on the recycling, uh, bit.
And, the college is not alone, the city is also struggling with the very same questions I've already heard. They're having real issues with, um, finding ways to get rid of plastic right now, because overseas was where they were going, and now it's going into landfills as well, even though we're paying.
For recycling.
For recycling.
Yeah.
Which is much costlier.
Well, I, I always wonder about that, because I, I have that big recycling bin in my house.
Yeah. Well. Don't stop, I'm not, I'm not discouraging anybody from putting it in there right now, but, but, um, I, I have had conversations, um, with city officials who have also said that this is a challenge for them as well, um, especially with the, um, tensions overseas in Southeast Asia, which is where most of, um, the plastic goods were being shipped to be dumped into the ocean, apparently. So, I, I'm not sure that any of us have got it right. So, it, it's something we have to, we have to still consider, but we have to, um, figure out a way that really works. Pardon?
Nothing.
Tomorrow's headlines.
Trustee Thor, Trustee Thor.
Mary Petlicoff said.
Don't recycle, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I wish, I wish, I wish there was an answer.
Very soon, yeah.
So, uh, transitioning to my more sunny side, um, uh, I do want to acknowledge a couple, um, really exciting things that are going on with my teammates. Trustee McDonald and I were fortunate enough to take part in the Michigan Community College Association's, um, annual, um, gathering in Traverse City, and, uh, one of our, our own, uh, Dr. Schunkweiler, who's the dean of our, uh, School of Health and Human Services, was there, and she was honored as taking part in, um, the leadership training. was there, and she was honored as taking part in, um, the leadership training modules that the Michigan Community College Association puts on. Um, I was proud to have her representing the college there. Um, and I, from what I can tell, she, um, it's hard to believe this, but she emerges even a better leader than she went in as. And, um, I'm also proud to have Dr. Lori Gonco, um, be the one who will represent our college at the same, um, training mechanism, which will be, is it this fall, Dr. Gonco, this fall? Um, and, um, we had a retreat as a cabinet just, uh, a week ago, and, um, we're, we're proud of the things we, we came out of that with, and I'll be updating the board about that, but one of the things we are, uh, proud of is our team nature, and you, you call people out for things that are exciting when, um, your teammates, and so I'll probably make her blush, but, uh, it is Amy Clark's birthday today. So
Happy birthday, Amy.
So, um, happy birthday to Amy Clark. She's so dedicated, she's spending her evening with you all, and she'd wish I'd stop talking, so I, so I will.
Yeah, she wants to go to dinner.
I, I mean it, I'm done.
Oh, okay, next item, please.
Action items, citizens' participation, citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and not agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary. May speak at this time. I have no blue cards.
Next, next item, please.
Special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they're, if they are, we will exclude them from the action below.
I have a question about the last item that we have on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Trustee Moser, I can't
I have a question about the last agenda item.
Number eight?
Yes.
Do you, would you like a poll before we
No, no.
So you just wanna, just want them to stop to ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Any others? All right.
Move to approve action items numbered one through eight as recommended in this agenda.
So, uh, support.
Okay, Trustee Moser?
Yes, I, I'd like to ask if, for the media buys that we're doing, are we doing something differently than what we're traditionally doing, especially now with the age of social media, um, ads everywhere?
That's number five.
Number five.
Is that number five?
Yeah.
I apologize. Um, I, I saw that, and then human resource is right under it, but
Number eight is Fred Steiners, and you had him really scared.
He was trying to think, how am I supposed to answer this?
I truly apologize. I have it on the screen. It's number five about media buys, so.
So is there something different in the mix, is what you're asking?
Yeah, that we're doing, and especially on the social media aspect.
And I don't think Rhonda is here.
You're, you're right, Madam Chair. Uh, Trustee Moser, um, Rhonda DeLonge is the one who makes these decisions, um, and gets my blessing for them. I, I do not believe that her strategy changed, uh, on these. I do believe that, um,